Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen to order at 7:04 for Monday, January 12, 2015. All members are present. I'd like to stop by welcoming everyone here tonight. I do see that we have a full assembly here and, I'm sure, at home. We do have a full agenda here, and I want to wish everyone a very Happy New Year in 2015. This is our first meeting, so I do rest assured that I do see plenty of people in the audience, and you will be recognized and given an opportunity to speak. So do be assured that we know you're here, and we will be calling on you. Okay? So, thank you. We will start off by the transmitting of Treasury warrants 2626A, 2727A, 2828A, 29 and 29A. Do I have a motion?
So moves.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for June 23, 2014. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve them as written.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a quick comment regarding the minutes from June 23 relative to the discussion of the Woodfield School and the Butters Farm, and then the discussion of the Roman House, to some degree, ensued. And I'm not sure how it could buy me that night, but I see in the minutes that somebody indicated that it would make sense for the Roman House to be used for either offices or special ed. And I just wanted to comment on the prospect of using that building for special ed. I just find that absolutely unacceptable. You know, you don't build an $85 million high school and then put the autistic kids in a 100-year-old building with, you know, 40, 50-square-foot classrooms and no climate controls. So I just want to offer that comment publicly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just echo what Selectman Newhouse stated. I'd be opposed to it at 100 percent. I mean, we all worked together to make sure that school became reality, and we've done that work unanimously. So I totally agree with Mr. Newhouse, and I'd be very upset if that did happen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our first appointment, which is for 7:00 PM. We're running a few minutes late. It's with Mr. Paul Flaherty of Robert P. Flaherty Jewelers, Inc. It is a public hearing relative to an application for a second-hand dealer license. Mr. Flaherty? Hi. Just want to have a seat at the table. That would be great. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, thank you very much for being here this evening. We are in receipt of your application. I don't know if you want to make any preliminary introductions and introduce yourself to the board. Obviously, we do know who you are, and we are aware of your store at the Plaza. But if you want to speak to a little bit about your application, and then the town manager will speak as well.
I submitted the application as required. I notified the Butters, and I gave my certificates of mail to...
Beverly.
Yes.
Yes.
And we've been following the guidelines that set up since I've approached Chief Begonis and back, the previous town manager. We approached him back in, I want to say, 2006, 2008. And they set up a series of guidelines for me to follow as far as purchasing second-hand goods. Second-hand goods is the worden that you guys use. I'm basically buying scrap precious metals. If you were to per se lose one gold earring, what do you do with one gold earring? Well, I'd like to buy that precious metal from you, and then I send it to my refiner and have it melted down for gold that I can use in other repairs or other items of that nature. So we've had a sheet that was handed out to us from the Wilmington Police Department asking that anybody that we purchase from be over the age of 21, provide a photo ID, a license, write down a description of what the item is that they are getting rid of or that they are selling. Take a copy of that. The seller has to check off on the form that they are the rightful owners of said possessions and are selling it of their own free will. I hold on to those items for a period of 30 days. Then after those 30 days, I take it and take it to my refiner and melt it down. So we've been following that practice for a while, and this is, as far as I understand it, more of a formalized legal licensing procedure to go with it.
Sure. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to the manager, but I do want to compliment you in the fact that I have received feedback from the town manager and from Bev that you've been very responsive and very cooperative with the town and with the police department. So just want to say that we appreciate that.
Most definitely try to be. I mean, everybody wants to be a good neighbor. There are a lot of circumstances that I turn people away. If it doesn't sound right, you know, if you've got a 22-year-old kid that walks in with a diamond ring, and I explain to him, "I'm not buying your diamond ring. I'm buying the metal that is this ring." So you're showing me a $1,000 ring, but there is $150 worth of gold within that ring. And if you're willing to accept $150 for a $1,000 piece of jewelry, that doesn't make sense. Something's not right. That's nothing that I want my name associated with. So we don't participate. 99 percent of my dealings are legitimate scrap. Chain's all mangled and destroyed. Well, you might as well at least get your gold value out of it now that it no longer serves as a functioning piece of jewelry.
Understood. Thank you for that explanation. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so this requirement is a follow-up to a change to the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, Chapter 5, Section 23, Regulation of Dealers in Junk Gold Metals or Second-Hand Articles. The annual town meeting in 2011 revised the bylaw in part to come up with a formalized system to assist the police department in tracking down stolen property. It set out certain requirements that need to be met, and over the last couple of years, the process has been reviewed. A counsel has looked at it, and in October, my office sent out letters to those establishments that we identified as potentially dealing in second-hand goods. Mr. Flaherty has responded. You may recall the board established, I believe it was last year, the fee for this license as being $100. The license is actually good through May 1st. In this case, it's my recommendation that the fee be prorated, in large part because of our process, the time it took to put together the final process, essentially with three-quarters of the way through the year. So it's my recommendation that the board, if it considers this, consider it for a fee of $25. But it is a license in second-hand materials, and specifically, as Mr. Flaherty notes, dealing in precious and semi-precious metals and jewelry. So he is the first of the establishments to come forward and get cleared, so to speak. I do have recommendations from the police chief. I have to review the application, recommends approval. Also, favorable recommendation from the fire department. There are no zoning issues per the building inspector. And Pam McKenzie, the treasure collector, also recommends approval. No outstanding taxes.
Okay. Great. So hearing the manager's recommendations, I did have a conversation with Jeff today, and from my estimation, the prorated amount does make sense, is this license is only going to be valid for a quarter before Mr. Flaherty will need to renew. So rather than charge the full $100 for the full year, since he's only really receiving the benefit of the license for three months, based on $100, that's where the $25 came to fruition in terms of being the recommended amount. So having said that, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to grant the license with the $25 fee.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second. Just want to make a quick comment. I've patronized your establishment even before you had your dad.
Yes.
You people run a great establishment. I brought jewelry off you. You brought jewelry off your dad. They're stand-up people as we all can vouch for. So I just want to say that publicly. You guys run an outstanding business.
Thank you, sir.
I've been in there, and I'd recommend anybody to go see you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question that has no bearing on my vote on the motion, but I did have a question from Mr. Flaherty, if that's all right. Mr. Flaherty, how are you? Nice to see you. Does this permit? I see where you're getting a second-hand dealer license, and you went through and described that your intent would be to take some of these sort of scrap metal, scrap gold or whatever, and send it and have it melted down or whatever.
Yes.
But does it, if a piece was repairable and someone was interested in selling it to you, would you potentially repair it and resell it? Are you looking to do that at all? Or does this license give you that option to potentially resell it if it's resellable?
As I read it, it does sound like I could do that. But like I said, most of the majority of the items that I am purchasing, they are scrap up and beyond repair. I do like to recommend to people, give them their best option. If they're selling me something that, yes, I could repair it, clean it up, and resell it, I'm still purchasing this at a scrap price. It would be in your best interest if you were to sell it privately as a used piece of jewelry for yourself, Craigslist, eBay, the WantDad, you know, your brother-in-law, Jimmy, whatever. You would make more money for yourself selling it as a used piece of jewelry as a selling it to me for the piece, the price of the scrap. But as far as I understood it, it did sound like I could sell it as an estate piece.
And quite frankly, I thought that that's kind of what you were coming in to get the authorization to do. And when you started describing that your intent was to really scrap or, you know, sell it for scrap, it was a little bit surprising. But nevertheless, you educating your consumers, your buyers, is why Mr. McCoy said the kind things about you, your father, your business, and I echo that as well. It's really just creating educated consumers. So thank you very much for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that will be circulated for signature. We'll move right on to our next appointment as we're moving a few minutes behind, which I apologize for. It is with Kathleen P. Moore, Community and Customer Manager, and Brian McCallum, Manager for the Customer Metering Services Group for National Grid with reference to the Gas Regulator Replacement Program. And hopefully, I was close in pronouncing your last names.
You were, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen. I'm the Community Manager for National Grid, and I cover the town of Wilmington. We're here tonight just to give you an overview of a project that we're currently doing in the town of Wilmington, and it involves replacing gas regulators. And just to give you a little bit of background, we came in mid-December, early to mid-December, and had a conversation with the town manager and the fire chief, as well as some other town officials, to give them an overview. And this is just for your information. So since we've had the discussion with the town manager, the project has started, and we're underway, well underway. We're nearly finished in the town of Wilmington. But a gas regulator is a piece of equipment, and I'll encourage you to chime in if I misstate anything on the technical side. But it's a piece of equipment near the meter that allows us to drop pressure of high-pressure gas down to a pressure that's appropriate for a home or a small business. So it regulates gas pressure. It's National Grid's equipment, but it is near the meter, which in most cases is outside. In occasional circumstances, we'll see it inside a residence. So we are in the process of replacing a few regulators. We've identified four particular models that we want to replace, and the project is broken up into two phases. The first phase is what we're doing right now, and it's simply identifying the regulators that are out there that we need to replace. And that requires a visual inspection. So we've gone from premise to premise and done a visual inspection of the regulator to determine whether or not it's one of the models that we're looking to replace. The models that are out there that we are replacing have been out there from the '40s up through the '90s, and we just have newer equipment that we're looking to put out there in its place. So that's Phase 1, just to identify the number of regulators that need to be replaced. And we're finished with the identification piece in Wilmington, and it's 375, I believe.
Correct.
Yep. 375 regulators in Wilmington had to be inspected, and we found that 56 of them, I believe, had to be replaced.
Correct.
And 38 have already been replaced, so there's another 19 that will be done. The replacement phase is coming in the spring. The reason some have already been done is if we're out at a premise doing work for another reason, if we're replacing a meter or if you call us out because there's an issue, and we see that you have one of those regulators, we'll replace it at the time rather than wait till the spring. So we're doing the work as we come across it. But for any customers that we have that were not out there, just on a matter of another piece of business, we'll replace it in the spring. So that's pretty much an overview of the project. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board, and I see we have a large audience here. So while National Grid is here, if anyone has a question or a comment that they wanted to make relative to this topic, please feel free to raise your hand, and I'll recognize you at that time. So having said that, I'm going to open it up to the board, and I'll start to my right.
Understanding, if I understand you correctly, and there's only about 19 residences in Wilmington that need to have this regulator changed over, is that the kind of thing that you can do with like a one-on-one confirmed appointment? Or use... Okay, so that's...
We will. We'll make arrangements with the residents because we'll need to make sure all the gas appliances in the home are shut off. And after the regulator's been replaced, we will make sure that all of the appliances are relet.
Okay. All right. So, and the reason why I ask that question, I pretty much expected that answer, but I think it's helpful that you point out that your staff, employees, vendors, whoever you might use...
Yep.
...have photo ID, but that...
Absolutely.
...folks who hear about this should not expect a knock at the door, you know, unbeknownst to them.
Correct. I'm glad you brought that up. So the identification piece that we're sort of in the phase of now that's actually been complete was being done by contractors working on our behalf, and they did carry photo identification indicating that they were working on National Grid's behalf.
Okay.
So, yeah, the work is being done on a scheduled basis with customers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything?
Just kind of on the same vein, I noticed in your report here that they were all tagged.
That's right.
So the 19 know who they are.
Yes.
And if you've probably already contacted them and let them know.
I think we'll be contacting them in the spring when it's actually time to replace. But yes, they've been tagged.
Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything to my left?
Good. Thank you.
No. Thanks for the update. Thank you.
Japanese. Okay. Good. Well, thank you very much for being here. I do want to turn it over to the audience, just to see if anyone's here to speak on this topic that's in the audience.
Sure.
Seeing none? Thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next appointment, which is Board of Selectmen discussion with reference to the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Proposal. Just to set the stage here, I'm going to ask the manager to give an update overall to the general public and to the board. Then I'm going to turn it over to the board to ask questions, and then I see we do have a full audience here, and I suspect it's in large part due to this particular topic. So what I'm going to do is calling you at that time. So just if you can be patient, let us unfold the discussion, and we'll be with you shortly. Thank you.
So just to take this from the very beginning, so to speak, we were first notified back in, I guess it was the spring, that there was, that Kinder Morgan was looking at potential locations in Wilmington. There was a meeting scheduled in July. We set out to invite them in to understand more specifically what their intentions were. They met with the board on the 10th. Since that time, the town has, town staff has been both attending the meetings of this coalition group that was set up, as well as looking at the particular location, trying to get a bead, if you will, on the precise location. During the fall, Mike Woods, the Public Works Director, Paul Looney, the Town Engineer, and Bill Holt, the Deputy Engineer, have been both gathering information and looking at the site. Prior to the board's last meeting on December, I guess it was 15th or thereabouts, 14th, the town, through Public Works, had scheduled a site visit with representatives who were contracted with Kinder Morgan to actually understand the location of this proposed pipeline. They went out and took a look at that, and that, I think there was certainly reservation from the beginning about this, but I think it was, in my estimation, appropriate to take a measured approach, to really evaluate what the situation would be here with Kinder Morgan. There was some suggestion that there was a need for additional energy in the region. At the end of the day, given the proximity of this pipeline to some very sensitive areas, it, in my estimation, is not appropriate for the town to be supporting this. In particular, it's clear that the pipeline extends through the Woburn Street, across essentially the Public Works administrative area behind the Health Center, within approximately 100 feet of the Browns Crossing well field, which is of concern, obviously, because that is one of our remaining primary sources of water locally. It also continues on down from there, crosses Route 62, and is within the Zone 1 of the town's Salem Street wells. These two well fields comprise about 64 percent of the town's remaining local water supply. So the prospect of having a high-pressure gas line in that proximity is clearly of great concern. In addition, there are some other sensitive areas, some vernal pools that have been identified. It's within close proximity, as I'm sure many people know, to the Hearden Tavern, which is really the centerpiece, if you will, of the town's historic preservation. So it is, it's clear to me, based upon the review that has been done, that this location is ill-advised, and it's my recommendation to the board that the board vote to oppose the Lynn Field Lateral, which is the section that we're concerned about, and that the board authorize me to send a letter to both the representative at FERC, which is the agency that regulates this permitting process, and a copy, our legislative delegation expressing the town's opposition, and that further we formally join the coalition that has been involved in looking at this project.
Thank you. I want to thank you and your leadership team for the work that you've done. I do see that Mr. Michael Woods is here, and as well as Paul Looney and Shelley Newhouse are in the back. Also, I know Kendra Amaral has done a lot of work on this as well. Just from a public standpoint, we've been in consistent communication. They've really looked at this in a very deep sense to see the impact in Wilmington and what it would have on the residents. And obviously, our last meeting, we had discussions, and it was clear through the public and also through the board here that we share some serious concerns, not only to the impact that it would have in the residential area, but first and foremost, on the water supply. So I don't mean to continue to be redundant, but it's very clear that this route is not advantageous to the town. And FERC was due to release a report publicly on December 23rd, which has been delayed, and there's no ETA on that. And what, I'll speak for myself, but I suspect that I would speak for other members of this board, is that we were looking to get some state information from some state resources and other resources outside of Kinder Morgan that, for lack of a better term, did not necessarily have a vested interest in the project from a profitability standpoint and from a business standpoint for the future. There's no ETA when that report is going to come out. Maybe there is since...
Madam Chair, if I could just note that, as of this writing, I was not aware that the report, when the report would be released, but checking the state website, apparently the report was released on January 7th, so it did just recently...
Okay.
...get released. I haven't had an opportunity to go through it in great detail. I did ask Paul Looney, our Town Engineer, to review it in a summary fashion. The report was intended to make a determination as to whether there was a need for additional energy sources in our area and possibly look at some alternatives. The report, as I understand it, does indicate that we do have an energy shortfall, but, you know, even as critical, in my estimation, as critical as that is, the fact of the matter is that this pipeline does not belong in that particular location. You know, in fact, I have a call into Alan For, who is the Vice President of Public Relations for Kinder Morgan. Called him last week to advise him that I was going to recommend that the board oppose this particular project and suggest that a meeting take place and that they identify alternative routes.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to open it up for discussion. I just want to bring us up to date as to where we're at right now. What I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up to the board. I'm going to start to my left and then work across. I may have some additional comments to make at the end, and then we'll turn it over to the public.
Thank you. The, who's responsible, is it FERC that put forth this report on the 7th? Is that who's writing that, or is it a state agency?
It's actually a state agency. It was the Department of Energy Resources contracted with a private consultant to prepare this report.
Thank you. You know, that report, for me, was going to help me formulate my opinion, help me formulate my opinion, as to whether or not the project, overall, the project, had merit in the region. So I've been reluctant. Since we first became aware of this project back in, I guess, May, June, whatever it was, and then Kinder Morgan presented this to us in July, it's a bit of a concern. And obviously, concerns were raised right out of the gate, but I wasn't, I felt like I didn't have enough information to quote-unquote "oppose" it. And depending on how this, what kind of information this report yields or reveals, I still may or may not formulate that strong opinion. Irrespective of what the content is in that report, I have grown to become strongly opposed to the pathway of the Lynn Field Lateral, especially as it goes through Wilmington, for all the reasons that you just said. Concerns, and I hope I'm not repetitious, but my concerns include, most especially, the proximity to the Browns Crossing and Salem Street wells. I didn't know it was 64 percent of our water. I knew it was a large percentage, but I didn't realize it was that grand. So for obvious, we, with the history of the water concerns that we have had in our community, I think it behooves us to make sure that we do everything that is feasible and possible to protect what we do have left. And I would hope that the federal, what is it, Federal Environmental Resource Commission would agree with that observation. Additionally, there's the proximity to some private residences through the Thrush Draper LaCoia Circle, I believe it is, off of Salem Street, near the Health Clinic, near Andover Street. There's a transit, if you look at the map, there's, I highlighted some spots that where the pipeline goes, it's very close to some residents. And also, up at the top on this map that I'm looking at, I believe that's like the Ashwood Circle area, but I could be wrong about the street name. I couldn't see a street name on it. But nevertheless, it's doggone close, and certainly would be more, too close for comfort if I lived in that area. So those are a couple of concerns there. And any pathway through a conservation or protected land, and the impact that it could have in those areas, is a concern. Still, the unproven documentation as to whether or not there is, in fact, a need for an increased supply in the region. And even if this need does exist, does this project solve that need? I'm aware that there's another project on the radar screen that doesn't involve Wilmington at all. It's a smaller-scale project, and perhaps that project is the right one for, to accommodate any deficiency in the region. I don't see any evident benefits to Wilmington or the region from the presence of this pipeline. I haven't had, that hasn't been explained to me by Kinder Morgan or Tennessee Pipeline. The presence of that pipeline going through our town and our neighboring towns, I have no evidence... no evidence that that will yield any benefit to us, either short or long term. And certainly, what are, in my opinion, the costs, the economic, potential economic costs, the immediate costs in terms of the impact on, during the installation and the maintenance after the pipe is in place, far outweigh any gains that I believe that potentially could be, could come from this. So when there's costs that outweigh the benefits, I think we have to oppose it. Frankly, you know, certainly, I believe we should write a letter. I hope that, as the discussion goes forward, my hope coming into this evening was that we would be able to have a letter written that we could put our signatures to. Not to suggest, Jeff, and I don't know, maybe we could flush this out a little bit, but as we write a letter and articulate our position to FERC, Kinder Morgan, our legislative delegation, certainly, if you write a letter to that effect on our behalf and state that the Board of Selectmen took a vote in, yada, 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 I think that has weight. But if that same letter were to be written and our signatures were on it, perhaps it would have a little bit more weight. Maybe not, and I share that, and I put that out there for discussion if you folks want to, want to have that discussion. So those are my points. I don't have questions. I just, I wanted to get my position on this issue out there, and it continues to evolve, but I do believe that we have to take action and do so soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I said early in its infancy that I wouldn't have a problem supporting the proposal as long as that it would really benefit Wilmington in some way. Obviously, and I said I would stay tuned to it, and I would wait for the jury to come in to render the decision. After looking at this plan, and after hearing what I've been seeing, and after seeing what I've been reading in the newspapers, obviously, they're going to be coming through our final aquifers. I know years ago, we lost those wells, down by Olin Chemical, and I know those wells were perhaps one of our greatest natural resources. We used to sell water to the town of Burlington. That's not the case anymore. We have to buy water during our high-peak season. So I do support the town manager's recommendation, and that would be a disaster if these wells were ever to get contaminated, or if there was an issue out in that area. I mean, then we'd be 100% with MWR. I don't think that's the way for us to go. So obviously, I don't see any benefits as months went along. So I'd be, I'd support the town manager's recommendation and oppose this. Thank you.
I too support the town manager's recommendation. I remember in May, when it first came before us, being totally against it right away, anything going through any of our aquifers or any of our wetlands, to be quite honest with you. But there is a procedure in place, and I just want to let the residents know that we were taking in all the information. Town manager's done a great job with his staff and his office, and the residents have to know that, that we are out there working on your behalf, and something like this is just, to me, a no-brainer. This is a no-brainer that we have to stand against as any way we can.
I think it's basically all been said. I think that, you know, the town, I think, has two perspectives, and one is the town as an entity and a property owner, and as a, you know, as the, as the group that provides and protects the resources of the town. I think that the town also takes the perspective of being the representatives of individual property owners. So I've had a great deal of confidence in our administrative people to ferret out exactly what the impacts would be, you know, in terms of that first approach. What's been helpful for me is having folks call me and stop me and ask questions about it and make their position known when I see them. And I'm specifically referring to people who would live in the neighborhoods that the pipeline would prospectively go through. So to me, I find that helpful, because that's not necessarily the administrative people's job to do. I think that's our job to do. So based on all that, I'd certainly adopt the manager's recommendation and support moving forward in the manner that he outlined.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate my opposition to it as well. I think all the points have been made, and we've talked about the water piece. The other factor is, quite frankly, is that, you know, separate from the water piece and the route, you know, there's no guarantee as to the minimum amount that's going to be retained here and actually going to be utilized in the region. So I have concerns about some of the regulatory factors and assurances that, even if it were to go through and it were to be of some benefit, that we can guarantee that what is put through there is going to stay here, and I don't see that that's the case. The route doesn't work, even if we came up with alternative routes, which I know are being looked at. My concern is that we shift an issue that is, you know, impacting a resident base in a certain area and then shifting it to another area. So I don't think anybody really wants a gas line running through their area. That would be my guess on that. So I too, once again, support the recommendation of the town manager. And do you have any additional comments that you want to make before we go to the audience?
Just to say that, in terms of the process, this is in a so-called pre-filing stage, so it's in large measure, an information gathering process where Kinder Morgan is looking at the options, having conversations with impacted parties, or potentially impacted parties. I know, for example, in Andover, there were some conversations that occurred with representatives from the town, and as I understand it, they've agreed to relocate at least a portion of the Lynnfield line that goes through there, because they had similar concerns about the proximity of the line to some well areas. So, you know, I think we're still early enough in the process to be able to have some impact here. And as I understand it, once the pre-filing stage is complete, then it, a formal application is submitted, which is likely to happen sometime later in the year, summer or early fall, perhaps. And so it would be my goal to have this route relocated prior to that process starting. I think to the extent we can avoid having to address this when we get into the more formalized legal process, that's to our advantage.
Okay, thank you. So at this-
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I know you're going to go to the audience. Just after those comments or questions are received, I just wanted to point out that in our package, we have all of these upcoming open house dates, and I just want to make sure people are aware that list exists before they leave tonight.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, what I'll do is I'll go to the audience for any questions or comments, and then maybe we can take this out of order, and you can speak to that before anyone departs. Okay? So at this time, does anyone have a question or a comment? And in doing so, if I call on you, if you can please just give me your name and your address for the record, so we can have that, please. Thank you. Yes. Yes, sir.
Me?
Yes.
Ed Palermo, 23 Lukaiya.
Hi.
Obviously, living on Lukaiya, I'm certainly concerned about, you know, the proximity to my home, but the thing that I was waiting for is for that study to be done, and it looks like, Mr. How, you mentioned that there is an indication that there is a need for the pipeline somewhere in this region, which I guess is a bad thing. In other words, if the report said, "We don't need the energy," then maybe we could, we could stop this. So the way I understand it now is, if Kinder Morgan gets the permit to proceed from FERC, at that point, it's over, from what I understand. They're going to plow right through, because they have, they have the federal government behind them, eminent domain and things like that. So I guess my question would be, has the town thought of a different route, possible route? Have we, have we looked at that yet to?
We've had some, that's one of the things the engineering department has begun to look at. Quite honestly, I'd like to have Kinder Morgan offer up some alternatives and, before necessarily, you know, putting any alternatives out, but that is something that we're, we're looking at. I too was, in some measure, interested to find out if this report would perhaps suggest that there was not a need for this additional natural gas pipeline, or there were energy alternatives. Again, I haven't reviewed it in detail. I don't know that it specifically states that the pipeline is needed in this area per se, but it does suggest that there, we have some energy deficiency, if you will, and there's a need for, you know, additional energy, which it would seem is perhaps favorable to Kinder Morgan's argument that that's why we need to put this pipeline in.
So I guess the question that I ask is, has the town thought of a different route? We really haven't gone that far yet to suggest something to Kinder Morgan? Could you go here instead of there?
No, we haven't offered anything to them. Again, I think we have some ideas as possibilities. I mean, from my perspective, the ideal situation would be to run these kind of lines along existing utility corridors, because you're not impacting other residents. I don't want to see us suggest relocating this to another residential area that's going to impact another group of individuals. So, you know, I guess generally speaking, I'd like to see us, I'd like to see the pipeline run through an existing utility corridor or along, you know, but that's, I guess, that's my call, my suggestion at this point.
So I guess for people in Wilmington, it would be good for us to maybe bombard Kinder Morgan with letters and, you know, letters of opposition or whatever. I think that would be helpful. I mean, so I would suggest to anybody watching this on TV, just, just send them letters that we're opposed to it, and maybe that will help. I don't know. I don't think it's going to scare them away, because they've already, I guess, taken aerial photographs, and that's how they laid out this whole line that they're proposing. So they've already done a lot of work in their own. They've been behind my house surveying and putting the ribbons up and the stakes and all that stuff, so they're spending money already, and I'm sure they just want to follow that route. So now's the time to start bombarding them with opposition.
It seems to me that the town has a very compelling argument here because of the proximity to these well fields, in part, aside from the fact that it's so close to these well fields. We have a situation where the town has lost five well fields already. Of the four remaining, as I noted, you know, 64% of the remaining local water supply is drawn from these well fields. The other point is that back, I believe it was in the 90s, the town raised an appropriate $700,000 to purchase property behind the, the health center there that runs along that railroad bed, in part to serve as a buffer and a protection area for the well fields. DEP, in terms of their regulations with regard to Zone Two, notes in part, and I'll just quote from the memo that I prepared, that current and/or future land uses within a Zone One wellhead protection area are limited to those directly related to the provision of public drinking water, or will have no significant adverse impact on water quality. Clearly, a pipeline doesn't contribute to that kind of situation. So, you know, DEP is telling us, you know, you need to isolate this area, you know, have minimal impact on this area. That's why we spent the money to protect it. It would seem to me we have a pretty, pretty strong case, but certainly Kinder Morgan's been in the business for a while, so.
Maybe you can't answer this. Are you saying that if FERC issues that permit to Kinder Morgan, let's say in December of this year, they say to Kinder Morgan, "Go ahead, you have the permit, build your pipeline," you still think the town might be able to stop it?
Well, I, my expectation is that we would be able to divert it prior to that. If it gets into, if FERC issues an approval, then we have to look at our legal options in terms of appeal. I mean, I've had some initial conversations with town council about this, so they understand what the situation is. You know, if it becomes an issue where FERC does approve it, then I think we take a serious look at what our appeal rights are.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you done for the moment, sir? I just wanted to jump in on this vein here. You know, from my perspective, I wouldn't want to overstate the, you know, the degree to which the town can control the result, but I also wouldn't want to minimize the effect that we might have. And I think, to your very first question, you know, as the town looked at alternative routes, I think from a strategic standpoint, sometimes you roll out alternative strategies, alternative positions. And I think that, that certainly makes sense in the big picture. But I also wouldn't want to diminish the message that we're trying to send tonight, which is that we, we don't think that anywhere in the town of Wilmington is an appropriate place for that pipeline. So in following up what the manager had noted, it seems to me that, without handicapping the odds of succeeding on this, you know, I think as a community, if we can't be successful in stopping this, at least we'll get out and swinging. And so let's, let's, I think, kind of follow the blueprint, and to my way of thinking, this is very similar to the New England Transrail situation several years back, in that, you know, if you, if you tried to handicap the town's legal options, well, you know, I'd like better odds. If you tried to handicap the town's political options, I'd like to have better odds. But, you know, if you play all those angles the best you can, and, you know, and we, we work at it together, we'll, we'll give it our shot, you know? And I certainly don't want to put words in the manager's mouth, but I took the statements that were made earlier as serious thought has gone into, you know, possible alternatives. But, you know, let's not diminish our message here. Let's, let's object to this thing, and then, you know, as this process unfolds, if there are other options that are available that, you know, then maybe we're compelled to look at them. But, you know, for now, let's, let's take our, let's take our swings, you know?
All right. Thank you.
George, I'm from Watercoast Street. Could you give us the link or the website address for that report, whatever it was? Did you reference the January 7th report? Could you post a link to the website or something?
I got it here, if you, I just happened to find it. It's 118 pages, by the way, so I just emailed it to myself. It is, bear with me now, please. It's at mass.gov, and it's the low-demand study. I don't have a URL for it. Bear with me, I'm going to try to find it on massplan.org. Forgive me.
Why don't you just read the whole report?
Yeah, right, I'll just start here. Go to massplan, all one word, massplan.org, and there's a link right on the homepage, right there, for the Massachusetts D O E R Low Demand Study, Final Report and FAQ. It's under the quick link, Quick Links.
I just asked the manager to see about if there's a way to post the link onto the town's website, so that the town of Wilmington residents can actually go out and pull the report. We will make an effort to do that. If for some reason you can't find it, you know, feel free to call into the town hall and ask that question, but we will try and get the link up. Does that answer your question, George?
Thank you. I just wanted to, we, I don't know what the report is exactly, but the best way for me to figure it out is to read it myself, and I appreciate this, if you could identify it. Thank you.
We'll try and do that. Thank you. Yes, the gentleman in the blue shirt.
Paul Jessup, Greg Druck. Well, I want to thank the board for doing the homework and taking this decision. I agree with all the points made here. One question I have is, will you issue a rescind letter as well to Morgan? In other words, stop them from further surveying on town property and, you know, access to our, to our lands?
Well, the only authority that the town has is to authorize them access to the town's property. We don't have any authority to authorize the town, the Kinder Morgan access to private property. I've had some discussions about that, and, you know, that's something that I'm considering. I haven't really made a decision on that. In part, and they've already been out to look at the area, you know, on the one hand, you know, I'm looking at in the context of when we get to FERC, if we get to FERC. To some measure, I think we need to be reasonable in, in FERC's mind. I'm not sure if it's productive or counterproductive at this point to rescind that. We may have more credibility based upon the points that we've made and the fact that we have- we have, in fact, allowed them to survey the town's property as opposed to just shutting the door and saying, "We can't, you can't go in."
Yes.
I'd just like to offer some information for people that might not have been here at the last meeting. I've done extensive training across the country through the National Pipeline Training Program and it dealt with oil and gas pipeline. And the pipeline companies, they go through areas that are wetlands and areas that are aquifers all the time. I stated before that federal law, I believe, will trump state and local law. I hear there's some concerns about having people on the property surveying. However, I think it would be best if you did allow them on your property and I think there are probably regulations that give them the right to go on the property. Just like if somebody was doing work on, on an abiding property, they would have the right to notify you that they might need to go on your property to put a fence up or something like that. So it would be better to just let them on the property to identify wetlands and anything like that. The other information that I'd like to share is that the pipelines are coated. They're coated to prevent against corrosive soils. The butt ends are all welded in an X-ray. The companies, they send electronic equipment through the pipes to check for anomalies and they're very, it's a very sophisticated piece of equipment that, it sends data back to computers and it shows where there's decreases in the thickness of pipe or any type of anomalies. And they spend, they spend literally millions and millions of dollars fixing pipes all the time. I went to the town engineer's office this week and one of the concerns that I have is that the town's philosophy of being proactive, I think, I don't really agree with. I asked him if he was specifically designated to look for alternative routes and he said no. And I don't think we should be waiting on Kinder Morgan to come up with an alternative route. I think that this should be a collaborative between the town of Wilmington, all the abiding towns, and especially the people in Olympia. With regard to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's approval, one thing you need to understand is that the company wouldn't be spending tons of money on engineering, public relations, and lawyers and everything else if there wasn't the need for gas. Our country is looking to become energy independent. If you watch the news and you see the big tankers coming from other countries into Boston Harbor, that ought to let you know that our country hasn't been energy independent. However, our country now is the number one natural gas producing country in the world. And in order to get FERC approval, the company has to prove that every bit of gas that goes into that line, the entire volume is sold. And with the institutional users and the industrial users, I'm sure you're going to find that they will prove that there is a need for gas. And I think that they will prove part of that by just showing that we're bringing in tankers from other countries. I think what I would recommend for this board to do is to get a very large map of all the communities that are involved leading to Olympia and identify where blasting is, where water wellfields are. But I, I stated it before that these people have high technology capabilities where they can go under, under a lake, under a river. They can go 60 to 100 feet under a river. They can go miles underneath there. They do it all the time when they're drilling for oil. It's called horizontal directional drilling. I'm not offering this information to say that I'm in favor of this pipeline, but I'm pretty confident that these people will get it approved and federal law will trump any type of local law or state law. And if, if you're really concerned about our wellfields, I would ask you to do something in addition for the community. And that is recognize that there's heavy blasting at Benevento's and it's subjecting us to very high vibration. But the big concern about that is, is that directly abiding our wellfields below the ground is a storage tank, two storage tanks, at least of 20,000 gallons of gasoline and diesel. And I've brought it up many times before that the blasting, every time they blast, they shake that system. So if you're really concerned about our wellfields, I would suggest you start taking action to looking at moving that fuel storage because when Kinder Morgan comes before you and they say, "You're really concerned about your wellfields, but yet you built 20,000 gallons of underground storage beside an area that's being blasted right beside your wellfields." And then in addition to that, you have all these gas lines running through your streets in town. So I guess what I would have to offer is, what are you going to say to Kinder Morgan when they say that to you? Are you going to say, "Oh, we didn't know that"? Well, you know it now. I've said it for years that that's probably one of the most very responsible things a town has ever done by building a fuel system right beside a wellfield beside an area that's being blasted.
Thank you.
That's what all that to say.
Thank you. Yes.
Suzanne Sullivan, 61, speak. I just want to thank the board for the positions that you've all taken. I can say that I appreciate it and a lot of residents in town appreciate that position, that sort of position to take. And if this new house is correct that this is solved from once the New York Transrail, I mean, almost identical across the board, but if I look out, we're commended and telling us that, you know, we don't have any control over our destiny, pretty much, our town, protection of our water resources, how we want to develop whatever it is, is wrong. I just, I believe at this point in time, there's an environmental impact statement that's out, Jeff. I'm pretty sure.
I think it's part of one phase of it. I think it's like a ten-part piece and part of it is out, yes.
So I mean, that's a real important step in the process to make sure that the town's heard because once FERC does approve this, they, they start taking land by under domain. They start the process ASAP. They don't, they don't wait, they just come in and do it. The state of Nebraska just lost their lawsuit to try to stop the XL pipeline from going through their state. Same thing, they have water supplies, they have private land. This is a thing that's going on all over the country. I mean, nobody wants to have this kind of stuff going through their water supplies and through their landers. And they just recently lost a lawsuit. So I'm just saying this thing not to discourage the board. I mean, I agree, we have to swing the battle, we have to go down fighting, in my opinion. We have to stand up for what's yours and protect the town. But I think it's going to be a battle and if we don't pony up with all the other towns and everybody doesn't get together and become one unit in fighting this, then everybody's going to lose. Out in the western part of the state, people fought really hard and have moved it to southern Hampshire. Now the people in southern Hampshire are up and out and they're all getting together and they're trying to fight it too. So it did work to some regard with the people in the western part of the state because they removed the pipeline, but like you said, they just removed it to somebody else's property. It's my understanding that the governor, the new elect governor, Governor Baker, is opposed to this pipeline, which is good for us. He is taking the position that you've spoken about, Jeff, about using existing pipe, you know, roofs instead of going through areas like public water supplies and people's private land. I guess that's all I have to say. And once again, I just wanted to say, say thank you to the board for taking that position. And there's a meeting this Thursday night at the library at the board's number of it. It's a public information meeting and there's going to be some speakers there and some people that know a lot more about it than I do. I'm just kind of learning a lot of stuff about it, but seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
At the library, if the board wants to hear my voice. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to call to the back in the red.
Hi, this is Katie Callahan. I live at 27 Dayton Drive, but I grew up on Lukaiya Circle. I too, and thank you very much for your support. I truthfully didn't think that was going to happen. I was just nervous. About two years ago, my husband and I were just watching TV and on HBO, there was a documentary called Gas Land. And this man was talking, he was just documenting this, the pipeline. So it was Kinder Morgan going across the country and ending up in Pennsylvania, and that's where he was from. And it was, I'm sitting there watching this thinking, "Oh, my God, this is insane. Like, how was this ever allowed"? People were complaining, they lost all their land, people were getting sick. And then they showed the man actually going up to their sinks, so their, their water, and lighting a match and the whole thing caught on fire. So water was coming out of the faucet on fire. It was leaking into their water supply. So I'm watching this thinking, "Oh, my gosh, this is, how could this ever happen"? And then I nearly died when I saw that they're considering this for Wilmington. So I guess it's just good for, you know, if you want to get people fired up, to recommend that they watch this. So it's Gas Land One and Two. They made two of them. I don't know where I was going with this, sorry, I was a little nervous to talk. But, and I just guess, you just never know if it can, so I realize we're not fracting here in Massachusetts, but you just don't know what the, the leaking could be. I just don't know what the pipes are made from, so whatever. And then also too, I can just recommend, there is a website called nofractgasinmass.org. It's all one word. And it shows all communities that have bonded together and there's tons of information and they did suggest about wind energy. I don't know where, what the report says about that, but it was a very resourceful thing to look at. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Frank Alott, 12, Draper Drive. Just want to touch on what someone had mentioned about writing letters to Kinder Morgan. I think that's fine, but keep, and I do want to thank the board, by the way. I think what's also important is that everyone communicates to FERC, you know, what our concerns are. Because FERC is really the ones who will stand, hopefully will stand behind us and either have them reroute it or stop the process altogether. And I think if you look around the country, Suzanne mentioned, there's a lot of lawsuits that are being lost with gas companies. Kinder Morgan may take some of the information, but based on what we see around the country right now, they're not going to do a whole lot to help our residents. You know, I know that someone had mentioned that there's a process for safety for drilling underwater supplies or going through water supplies. And that, you know, I'm sure there is a process, but as was mentioned earlier, there's a real risk in this town for contamination of water. So, one, why take the risk? There's no reason for it. There's no reason to gamble. We know it's a problem, so we need to express to FERC that it's a problem. It's real easy for a company from Texas to gamble with the water supply of people from Massachusetts. So I think we need to express that to FERC. We can express it to Kinder Morgan as well, but the federal government needs to know where we stand on this.
Thank you for that point. Yes, sir.
Mark Kennedy, five, Lukaiya Circle. I've been on Lukaiya Circle for 21 years, Wilmington resident for 24 years. I also want to echo everyone else and thank the board for the position and pending vote here against the, against the pipeline. It was what I was hoping to hear tonight and I'm glad that this is the position that's ultimately going to be taken from the board. Aside from the wells, which obviously are a big concern of mine, I drink the town water, that's what we've always done. That whole area, if you have not been through Lukaiya Circle, especially where this pipeline is looking to come through, right behind Ed's yard, behind Bill's yard, it's all a beautiful wooded area. And the plan, as I understand it, is a 50-foot clear cut through that area, which would absolutely change the look of the whole backside of Lukaiya Circle. Not to mention the marshland that whether it's going over or underneath that, I can tell you, my children skate there. They were just there over the weekend skating on, on that pond in the back. So, you know, aside from the wells, which again are probably my number one concern, the position that you're taking now to be against this pipeline, clearly from the look of, in the neighborhood aspect of Lukaiya Circle and Draper and Hathaway Acres, is the right, is the right vote to be taken. So I appreciate that. The one quick thing is, you know, I see, obviously the next step is you're writing a letter, assuming everybody votes, based on how I'm anticipating you to. What's the next step been for the town? Is, is there the follow-up step? I know we've talked about a lot of different potential things, but is it kind of a wait and see what, what happens with, with Kinder Morgan and FERC? Do we have to kind of wait out that process? I just want to make sure that we're staying ahead of the, ahead of the ball here.
I think it's going to be important for us to have a conversation with representatives from Kinder Morgan and make the case to them that this is just not an acceptable option, that it's too sensitive an area. And essentially, the goal would be, you know, prior to this getting to the more formalized stage with FERC, to get their agreement to locate the line somewhere else. That would be my intention and also certainly make sure our state and federal legislators are aware of what's going on here.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Yes, sir.
Juan Luvita, 17, Heather Drive. I've been acquiring real estate for the MBTA by a net domain for like 25 to 30 years. And I had, there was one situation where Tennessee Gas came in and acquired nine miles of MBTA right away by easement, by a net domain, and the MBTA couldn't do anything about it. So we need to be very careful how we move forward. We need to oppose it any way we can, you know. I'm also on the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm very concerned about, you know, the wells. I appreciate what you guys are doing, but we need to stay on top of it before it gets to FERC.
I would just add to that, we have, you know, we have consultants on retainer that give us advice on this stuff. Obviously, we have legal counsel. That I think, you know, is up to the town administration and the board to take care of. I see, myself, I see an opportunity with our new congressman. I mean, this is a, this is an individual that got elected and talked about, you know, being practical and tackling things that he could really have an impact on coming out of the gates. You know, I take that as an encouraging approach. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm a realist, like I think folks in, you know, that I've heard speak here tonight are realists, but, you know, we're going to pull together all of the assets that we have and all the resources that we have and if nothing else, we'll be united in trying to accomplish what we're all talking about tonight.
On that similar point, I had made a note to Congressman Moulton, who might be someone that folks want to reach out to and perhaps we should include him on any, on communications. But I also wanted to draw our attention to the fact, if this report that we talked about a little while ago does indicate that there's a deficiency of supply and a need for an increased supply, there is another project in the, in the world being discussed for the region from Spectra Energy, I believe, right? And I know nothing about the Spectra Energy project. It's, there's a couple of the Algonquin Line and the Hudson Valley Line or something, but it's intended, my understanding is, on a much smaller scale, it's intended to bring more supply to the region, but not to the degree of impact, both of supply as well as impact on the, on the environment, as the Kinder Morgan project. So I cross my fingers and maybe hope that FERC, when they look at these reports and look at the various proposals that are being lobbed out there, that they will, if they're going to support a project, that they'll support the one that has the negative impact to the least amount of people. So, you know, cross your fingers and let's, let's get educated about the Spectra Energy. Last thing I'll say is, speaking as a, as a, as a unit or working together with our fellow communities that are affected by this, your recommendation was, and I believe that, I think we all sort of indicated, that the intent is to officially join the coalition that we had been attending the meetings of, but now sign, sign the document that says we're, we're full members of said coalition. Is that your recommendation?
Yeah, I would recommend that we sign on formally. We feel, like I say, we've had representatives attending the meetings since back in June or thereabouts when the group was first formed. It's, as far as I know, to this point, the group is still trying to figure out the approach to take in terms of whether they hire a consultant and if they do, you know, how that cost gets apportioned amongst the towns. I mean, that's going to be critical, I think, to this whole process is having, you know, an outfit with expertise in this area that's able to make some factual arguments, you know, against the pipeline. We also, as selectmen, new house We also, as selectmen Newhouse noted, have consultant, consultants available in, in that's, we've had some conversations about bringing in a consultant at the appropriate time. But, but, you know, to the extent we can work with this coalition, I think it, number one, demonstrates a measure of solidarity, solidarity, but also just marshaling the resources of many communities makes sense.
Yeah, to speak with a louder voice, I think, as, as a, as a coalition, as a conglomeration of multiple communities, Wilmington speaking to FERC is Wilmington speaking to FERC, and we will do that. But if Wilmington is part of a larger organization of towns, all with a common goal and common perspective on this, hopefully that, that, you know, will elevate the message and bring it a little bit more visibility to it. So thank you, I didn't mean to steal that, I just wanted to make sure that people were hearing that we have the intention of going to that extra degree.
Yes, I mean, just to reiterate that point, I mean, even in conversations that I've had, you know, with Jeff, I mean, we've, we've touched on every single item that has been brought up in this room tonight, whether it's looking at alternatives, talking at the state and federal level, making sure that Wilmington is aware of this entire project timeline, working with our legal team to know what our options are, making sure that every meeting that we have a representative there or a seat at the table. So it's, it's a massive project, there's a lot of moving parts, we've had a change in leadership at the State House, we've, we've ruled with that change, the report has come out, we've really relied on the expertise of our engineering and Michael Woods as well through his department, which includes that. So we'll continue to stay on it, I don't want anyone to walk out of here with, with the belief that it's just going to be sending off a bunch of letters and just hoping that that's going to take care of it in a written form. We intend to stay very involved in the manager's team, we'll be staying very involved in being apprised of the dates. They've changed, some of the open houses have changed, the report dates have changed, so there are some moving parts. We are aware of the meeting on Thursday night, that's been stated out here publicly, and I'm going to be there at that meeting, and I believe that some of my colleagues will be there as well. So, does anyone else have any comments that have, that you haven't been called upon that would like to speak? Yes?
Hi, I'm Sheila Robesha, Manhattan Sky, 17, Draper Drive. And I think I would like to thank the board also, you know, for your presentation, and my concerns, of course, for the pipeline, it'd be going right across the street from my home. And I can see that they went through the conservation land, and there's pink ribbons, I guess, marking where this pipeline is supposed to be placed. And there's also a pond and marsh and swamp land again, where our kids all ice skate, and we go kayaking in there in the summer. But another concern I have is, one of the markers is like right on the sidewalk, and it's like, how is that going to be like a 50-foot marker? Are they going to take part of the road? Is that in the domain? Or the last house on our street, is that going to be? I'm worried about the property there. Also, the safety of the pipeline, because it is right next to Benevento's. And during the summer, I can feel the vibrations when they have those explosions, my old house shakes and windows, and we've been there 19 years, and I still not used to it, but it takes me by surprise, but I know what it is. But that safety issue, and also concerns about water, concern me. So I just wanted to express how we feel, and thank you for you taking the position of hopefully helping maybe reroute it to a safer location, or like you said, where the power lines are, I don't know. But I'm also interested in, like, if they do come up with a second plan, like, or where they might put it. And I also have the questions about what you mentioned about open house dates. Can you explain that to me?
Yes.
So, part of the process that is prescribed in the FERC filing during this pre-filing stage is to conduct a series of so-called open houses, where they invite stakeholders, so to speak, to come in and attempt to gain information about their concerns over impacts. So there's a series of dates that they've identified that start at the end of January and run through the end of February. The closest location to us is Andover on February 17th, at the Wyndham Hotel, 123 Old River Road in Andover. And each of these meetings begins at 6:00 PM and is expected to run through 8:00 PM.
Does that answer your question?
Um, yes.
So that is the closest location, there are a few others in Massachusetts, but they're, like Berlin is one, Pittsburgh is one, so they're, they're out geographically further away. So there are other...
Does anyone in the town go to these open houses? Or do you recommend, like, we should?
I think I would encourage anybody who is concerned about this to attend, yes. And we will certainly have representation there, and once again, you know, make our points. I think, you know, as many opportunities as we have to make our points, we intend to use those opportunities.
So according to the schedule here, it indicates that, as the manager indicated, that the open houses from 6:00 to 8:00, a light buffet will be served, landowners will receive notification of the open houses via mail, and ads will be placed in local newspapers to inform the general public. And that was sent out by the vice president to Public Affairs for Kinder Morgan. And then in terms of your question regarding that specific marker on Lakaya, I'm not aware of that, I don't know, I mean, this, I'm sorry?
It's at the end of Draper Drive?
Okay.
Oh, I thought you said Lakaya.
Okay, understood, I thought that's what you had it said, I apologize. So, I don't, I don't have the knowledge of that specific marker, I don't know that you would, Jeff, just off the top, but certainly if that's something that you want to, you know, engage with us to seek to understand, we can, we can help you with that offline, but wouldn't be able to answer that in this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Finn, six Lakaya Circle. Will this have any effect on the water table? Like, I have a son over in Hathaway Acres, and he gets water in his cellar, is this going to affect anything like that? And also Benevento, they're blasting like about 1:30 in the afternoons, I'd say at least twice a month. I hear them, yeah, I hear them. Yeah. Will it have any effect on the water table?
That's not a question I can answer, certainly, you know, that's a question we would have to raise, you know, as part of this process of looking at the potential impacts, but I, I can't answer that at this point.
Yes.
I just want to say that there would be wetland filling, it's my understanding that they do not have to do replications. So if they fill floodplain and wetlands, that they could, they actually are exempt from having to replicate wetlands and floodplain, that's my understanding, that they do so much. So I would imagine that it would have an impact on, on waters in that, to that degree, that's my understanding.
Something we would have to look into further.
To me, these are great questions to ask on February 17th of the folks from Kinder Morgan, I may just hear the answers personally.
Certainly excellent questions, I think, I think it shows merit to not misspeak and tell you something if we're not entirely sure of the answer, and just state that upfront that we'll look into it. Anyone else who has not been recognized and would like to speak for the first time? Yes?
To just address some people's concerns about the water table, one of the things that does have an impact on the water table is when wells get shut down. When you, when you decrease the pumping of water in your town, that's going to obviously raise the water table. As you know, the town purchased, the town entered into an agreement with MWRA, and they entered into that agreement to buy water. One of the things that I'd like the board to address is that prior to the town getting into MWRA, the town was required to explore for water. Now, in the Ipswich River Basin, we're not allowed to draw any more water from there. However, north of 125 is the Shawshin River Basin, and we would have been able to draw from that. However, when I went to the water department, they just couldn't produce any, any documentation of well drilling, nothing like that.
But I'm interrupting you, and I just say this to you respectfully, I'm not drawing the correlation to the conversation that we're having about the gas line. So I know that you have your opinions about how the town is run, and I know that you've spent a considerable amount of time going to each department and making your opinions and your observations known. What I'd like to do is just, out of respect for people's time, I understand that you have concerns about water, but that is not relevant to this conversation, so I'd ask that you bring that to a close.
I'd like to make it relevant, because we have people that are concerned about getting water in their basin.
Excuse me, ma'am. Yeah. I move that the board of selectmen adopt the town manager's recommendation and oppose the Kinder Morgan plan as summarized in the manager's correspondence, date of January 9th.
Much to the main, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And at that time, does anyone want to make a motion to officially join the coalition as itemized by the manager?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I would certainly be glad to make that motion, I kind of presumed that it was built into Mr. Newhouse's, yes, I would make the motion that the town of Wilmington officially join the, I forget what the formal name of the coalition is, but that we, we join the coalition that we've been attending the meetings of.
Northern Massachusetts Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, much to the main, a second, and all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So everyone that's here, relative to this topic, we have taken the votes, certainly there'll be public comments later on in the meeting, if you have any additional questions relative to the agenda that's set forth. If you don't, you certainly can feel free to depart, or you're certainly welcome to stay. Okay, so we're moving on to, thank you, to Communications.
The first item under Communications is the Kinder Morgan memo, which I won't go into as we've spent a fair amount of time talking about it. The next item is the informational meetings, as previously noted. The most, as I noted, the most local meeting is in Andover.
Excuse me, George, excuse us, sorry.
So the second piece of correspondence is the notice from Kinder Morgan with regard to the open house dates, as previously noted, the most local meeting is in Andover at the Wyndham Hotel, 123 Old River Street, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We have correspondence from Governor Baker with regard to Chapter 90 funding. He notes that he officially has increased the authorization for Chapter 90 funding from $200 million to $300 million. You may recall that the legislature authorized $300 million in Chapter 90, which is road repair money. Governor Patrick at the time had authorized 200 million, had withheld 100 million. One of the current governor's early promises, if you will, was to, if elected, authorize the additional 100 million. Essentially, what that does for Wilmington is it increases our authorization by $378,681. So I've had conversations with the Public Works Director about looking at options for the use of that funding for continued work on roads. We have a fairly significant list of roads that require either repair or reconstruction, so we'll be looking at the options going forward there. Next correspondence is from the Mass, I'm sorry, from, well, part of that was from the Mass Municipal Association, they essentially also note the increase in Chapter 90 funding. In addition, they also indicate that this funding was being increased in spite of what appears to be a, an increasing deficit in the fiscal year 2015 state budget. The governor, at this point, has indicated that he is not looking to impact local aid, which is certainly good for, for us. A memorandum from me to the board with regard to disposition of surplus property, this also comes up under, under the board to consider, but essentially, the school superintendent and I have agreed upon a process for the disposition of furnishings and equipment at the current high school. As you know, we're in the final stages of the construction of the new high school. One of the things that is happening currently is, we are seeking quotes from relocation firms that will move whatever materials will remain or have not been previously transferred in the high school. And as part of this process, we, we had to set up a protocol, if you will, so that the desks and chairs and various equipment that's in the high school, that is not being transferred to the new building. The other schools were given the opportunity to identify items that they would like to use in their school, that was the first option. Then general government departments were invited to do the same, whatever materials that are remaining will either have to be disposed of or perhaps recycled. One of the, as part of this request for quotes, we're asking the relocation vendors to provide a price for either the disposal of that material or possibly the recycling of it and sending it to other districts that may have a need or use, and that's what that memo reflects. We have correspondence from the Aleppo Shriners. This is with regard to the July 4th activities, and Mr. Pearlstein from the Shriners has indicated that the Shriners have taken a vote and are prepared to authorize the events of July 4th activities to occur at their venue. At this point, preliminarily, the expectation is that the events would start on June 30th at the Town Common, and then, that's a Tuesday, and then from Wednesday through Saturday, the events would be located over at the Shriners with fireworks, and this is all preliminary at this point, but fireworks slated for Friday night. As part of the approval process, there are some conditions attached to it, there were some changes that we've proposed that will hopefully address some of the issues raised by the residents of North Reading.
Jeff, I just wanted to interject, just to say thank you to you again, with your work in conjunction with the police chief, as well as the fire chief, and Skokirant and the entire Fourth of July committee, I think that, you know, you certainly have spent hours and gone through a great effort to try and accommodate the residents of Wilmington to see that the celebration continues, but also to be a good neighbor to the town of North Reading. And I know that there was a lot of effort that went into it, and I, I just want to reiterate again, on behalf of the board, that we do appreciate the efforts of yourself, Chief Begonis, who's here, as well as the fire chief and all the other people that I've already listed. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Next is a memorandum to the board, just announcing the appointment of the new Planning and Conservation Director. I'll just read this into the record. Pleased to announce the appointment of Valerie Gingrich as the Director of Planning and Conservation. Ms. Gingrich will replace Carol Hamilton, who retired October 31st, 2014. Ms. Gingrich comes to Wilmington from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management, where she served as a regional planner. While at CZM, she reviewed and drafted approvals for municipal harbor plans, she was lead reviewer for significant development projects along Boston Harbor, including the Wynn Casino Development Proposal for the city of Everett, and the Fort Point Downtown Waterfront District Harbor Plan, both projects comprising billions of dollars in development. Prior to working at CZM, Ms. Gingrich was a planner for the Boston Redevelopment Authority, where she served as a citywide waterfront planner and as a South Boston neighborhood planner. She worked with Boston's Zoning Board of Appeals, state regulatory agencies, and the development on the review and approval of a rezoning of the South Boston's First Street Corridor and various large-scale seaport Corridor and various large-scale seaport district developments. Ms. Gingrich has a master's degree in planning from MIT and a bachelor's degree in economics from Gordon College. She brings a tremendous wealth of knowledge and experience in the public realm and has an impressive track record in coordinating and negotiations of permitting a wide variety of projects, from small, single parcel projects to highly complex, multi-parcel master plans. During my discussions with Ms. Gingrich, I was impressed with her accounts of working constructively with multiple constituencies, including residents, the business and environmental communities, and developers to move projects forward. Her professional and academic experience make her well-suited to guide Wilmington's ongoing development as an attractive place to live, work, and conduct business. Ms. Gingrich's start date is January 12th today, and actually, I'm looking to have her attend the board's next meeting just to introduce her.
Great, thank you.
The next item under Correspondence is a memo directed to the Finance Committee and the department heads, and this outlines the upcoming budget schedule. As you know, we're in the midst of preparing the fiscal '16 budget. My presentation to the Board of Selectmen will be on February 2nd. In the meantime, there will be, following that, there will be meetings, various meetings with the Finance Committee, starting on February 3rd and running through February 26th, and then the Finance Committee will also meet with the Wilmington Schools and the Shawshank Tech. Important dates in terms of that schedule to note would be that the last day for submission of petition articles is February 6th. The last day for submission of department and committee nonpetition articles is the 13th of February. Then, on February 23rd, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, is the preliminary review of warrant articles, board to vote their intentions to lay out the ways described in the proposed town meeting article, public hearing regarding acceptance of streets by betterment if necessary. Then, on March 9th, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, would be the final review of the nonpetition articles and the public hearing regarding acceptance of streets, if any, and the Board of Selectmen to consider signing the annual town meeting warrant. Then, the public hearing with the Finance Committee and the Planning Board is scheduled for March 18th. Town elections are on April 25th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, with the town meeting on May 2nd at 10:30.
Moving on to the board to consider items, please. Thank you.
First item under Board to Consider is the appointment of Mary Delay to the Scholarship Fund Committee. You may recall that the town has head for a number of years the Scholarship Fund Committee. We first began offering scholarships back in 1996. To this point, there have been $119,000 worth of scholarships offered. This committee was established at a town meeting by statute, and one of the standing members of that group is the Superintendent of Schools. So, it would be my recommendation, based upon the retirement of the prior superintendent, Ms. Benton, that the board agree to appoint Mary Delay to the Scholarship Fund Committee.
Do we have a motion to appoint Superintendent Delay to the Scholarship Fund Committee?
So moved.
Which has been made? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the board to consider executing a memorandum of understanding with regard to 18 Denault Drive. So, as my memo indicated, the former Planning Director, Carol Hamilton, and Lou Ross from Town Council's office have been working for a number of years on this property. The current owners were, as I understand it, defaulted on their mortgage payments, so the bank has been holding, has been paying the taxes. The owners have vacated the premises. It's fallen into some measure of disrepair. It was originally established as an affordable housing unit, so the attempt over the last few years in working with the bank has been to retain the affordable housing status of the property, but essentially create a mechanism that would allow the bank to foreclose on the property and then in turn sell the property to what is designated as a qualified purchaser, who would then provide the necessary upgrades to the home to make it habitable, and then in turn sell it as an affordable housing unit. More recently, the Bank of New York Mellon has agreed to the terms of a agreement that would actually do just that. They have signed off on the document, and so it would be my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen enter into a memorandum of understanding with the current mortgage lender on the property known as 18 Denault Drive, Wilmington, Mass., for the purpose of establishing a process for foreclosure, rehabilitation, and the resale of the property as an affordable housing unit.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll move that we accept the town manager's recommendation and designate the address. I just lost it.
18 Denault.
18 Denault as affordable housing.
Second.
Which has been made? Seconded, any discussion?
Just take the motion to mean that we'll sign away on the memorandum.
On the executing of the memorandum of understanding and agreement. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, that being your motion with the second being as such? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
There are two separate documents to sign. It's actually a total of four places to sign. Then, under Board to Consider, we have a request from the Assistant Planning and Conservation Director for the board to accept a gift of land. This is as part of the Magrane Woods Conservation Subdivision. Because this was a conservation subdivision, the developer was required to set aside a certain amount of property for purposes of open space, which he has done. It's approximately 7.6 acres, consisting of four separate parcels. And so, I would be seeking a motion or vote from the Board of Selectmen to accept, under the care, custody, and control, the Conservation Commission, a gift of land located on map 84 parcels, 10A, 52A, 52J, and 52K, which is part of the Magrane Woods Conservation Subdivision, as more particularly described in the quick claim deed grant of easement and trustee's certificate executed by James W. Mangano, trustee on October 9, 2014.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect? The accepting of the gift of land from Mr. James Mangano, approximately 7.6 acres.
So moved, as described by the manager.
As described by the manager.
Second.
Okay, which has been made? Seconded, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
And the final request for the board to consider is to be seeking a vote from the board to delegate to the Wilmington School Committee their authority as described in Chapter 3, Section 10 of the inhabitant bylaws of the town of Wilmington for the purpose of disposition of property in the existing Wilmington High School deemed surplus to the needs of the town in the event that such delegation is required to satisfy the inhabitant bylaws. This, again, is the issue I talked about where, as the school transitions into the new building, a good portion of the property has been, or at least a portion of it, has been reallocated to other schools. Largely, at this point, we're talking about desks, chairs, some file cabinets, and as previously noted, the expectation would be to either allow that to be disposed of or reused.
Okay, so, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Which has been made? Do we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments.
Yes, for the people at home and for the board, Mr. Hall, can you tell us?
Kevin.
Just for the people at home, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see what it is that you're showing.
Mr. Hall, can you confirm that the High School Building Committee voted $164,510 to buy two dugouts for the baseball field?
Kevin, we're done. You're done.
Well, these are high schools. You got an agenda with high school issues, and you also have the town meeting.
You're done for tonight.
I was just going to ask if there's articles relative to.
Kevin. Once again, as the chair, I'm asking you to please refrain from speaking. What you're speaking about right now has nothing to do with tonight's agenda, and I will, it does not matter. You can save it for the town meeting floor. The agenda tonight has been set forth. That is not on the agenda for tonight.
Why would you not want to find out? See, the television cameras are not at the High School Building Committee meetings.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't, there is absolutely 100% a transparent process. The fact remains that.
Answer the question now.
He does not have to answer the question, and I'm asking him not to answer the question because this is a classic example of you trying to derail every meeting that we have because you go into the meetings. I'm speaking, please. You go in. I'm trying to be courteous to you to explain to you why I'm telling you, but you keep interrupting me, and I am trying to have a conversation with you. If you don't want to engage in that, then I will simply ask you to kindly withdraw from the meeting. If you continue to speak after I've asked you to please not to speak, I'm going to kindly ask the police chief to remove you from the meeting, okay? I'm going to say this to you once, and once only. You have come back into these public meetings, and I have tried to the best of my ability to give you an opportunity to speak. I feel at this point you have taken advantage of that privilege. You have gone through the town hall, through every department, and you are using this public session because you have been given answers at meetings that frankly you don't like, and so now you want to escalate it to a public forum so that you can get in front of the camera to make this your personal show. I am not going to allow that, okay? I've asked you to please refrain from speaking. If you speak again, I'm going to ask that you are removed.
Can I ask?
The answer is no.
Should we agenda?
The answer is no. I'm asking you, please, Chief Begonis, can you please ask this gentleman to leave? Thank you.
Can I submit this to the board?
No.
No?
No. Submitted in writing. Yes, you actually, you know what? You did call me, and the town manager did respond back to you, and if you'd like to meet with me, you can do that during normal business hours, and I would prefer that a police officer is present because you, sir, are a safety concern. So, that's why I do not want you to call me at my personal cell phone. Thank you.
I want it on the agenda for the meeting.
The agenda had already been set, okay? So, thank you.
Judy, you did great. You did good.
Thank you. It's unfortunate that, in this situation, that it has to come to that, but, you know, I'm not going to, I appreciate the kind words, but I feel that that's what's necessary at this time. So, at this point, does anyone else have a public comment that they'd like to make? I just want to make sure that I did not.
I plan to make one, but I'm not ready yet. Thank you.
If I may, wonderful job. That was very professional, and the, just the last time Mr. Langefelter spoke, a couple meetings ago, he used vulgar language, and at the very least, I think he owes you an apology, if not perhaps this whole board.
No, I won't, and I'll explain when I come forward. There's a lot of things going on right now that I'm just.
Doesn't make it right to use vulgar language like that in a public forum.
I was being attacked. You attacked me for no reason.
Thank you. So, new business and committee reports, I will start to my left, please.
Okay, thank you. My compliments to you, Madam Chair, for handling that unfortunate, uncomfortable situation. You have the patience of Job. The 115, January 15th information session with regards to the pipeline that was mentioned a couple of times this evening, it's my intention to attend that at the library. I think you had mentioned it as well, so just to anyone that will be there, expect to see me there. And lastly, or the only other thing, I just want to let you, my colleagues, know that it's my intention, in fact, I am attending the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Conference on the 23rd and 24th of this month. It's my fifth time attending this now. It's a wealth of information. In some cases, it's almost too much information. They throw a lot at us over the course of two very full days from 8:00 in the morning until the late afternoon and early evening hours. So, the point of that is I'll be gathering much information to the extent that I can. I will gather additional copies of documents or reports, make them available to you when I return, and if it seems to make sense, I'll try to prepare a report after the meeting to highlight you on any big items that I think are worthy of it. So, that is all. I appreciate that very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm good, nice job tonight, as usual.
Great job tonight, nothing else.
Thank you. And I do not have anything further at this time. I do want to say just quickly that the Entile Development Committee meetings will be resuming in the month of January, and when I have more significant updates to share in conjunction with Jeff, as he's part of that committee with me and we're working hand in hand, certainly we'll bring that forward. So, progress is being made in that regard. Thank you. Important dates?
Important dates, we have a curbside collection of Christmas trees continuing through January 16th. Town offices will be closed on January 19th due to the Martin Luther King Day. January 20th is, as previously noted, the Entile Farm Development Committee's next meeting here in Room 9, beginning at 6:00 PM. January 26th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here in Room 9 at 7:00. My presentation to the board with regard to the 2016 budget is scheduled for February 2nd. Then, February 6th is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion in the warrant for the annual town meeting on May 2nd, 2015.
Having important dates, do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Okay, which has been made? Seconded, all those in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous, thank you. Good night, everyone.